Oh, thanks.
Just beat me to it. I just put it in the shared folder.
7:30, we'll call the regular city council meeting of January 16th, 2017 to order. We do have a quorum. Let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
You've been flipping your calendar over.
Why? Is that a 17?
Yeah.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. Here on place all agenda items on the table for discussion with under C, new business, resolution 2018-10, year-end transfers. What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by council member Lildgren for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apotheosis, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes, special work session meeting of January 2nd, 2018, and the regular meeting, January 2nd, 2018. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Canofla, second by council member Lundberg for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apotheosis, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills, checks number 97788 through 97835 totaling $102,812.28 for 2017, and checks number 97836 through 97871 totaling $104,246.85 for 2018. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Lildgren, second by Alderman Hercock for approval of the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apotheosis, same sign. Motion carries. Awards, donations, presentations, proclamations? We have none. Consent agenda? Animal control report, December 2017, receive. Application for exempt permit, St. Mary's Church, raffle, approve. Building report, December 2017, receive. Fire department report, December 2017, receive. Heritage Preservation Commission minutes, January 2018, receive. Investment recap dated December 31st, 2017, receive. Off-sale liquor license, name update, Walmart, approve. Waste water treatment facility report, December 2017, receive. Water treatment facility report, December 2017, receive. What is the wish of the council on the consent?
Mr. President, I move to approve and receive the items from the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by council member Hanson, second by council member Lundberg to approve the consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apotheosis, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings and lettings. We've got public hearings, proposed 2018 improvement projects. Order in public improvement, 378. Greg?
Good evening. We are looking at five public hearings this evening. The four stretches that we're looking at is Fifth Street Northwest. We've got two blocks there. One is a petition project and staff-initiated. The other one is one block of staff-initiated, which is basically from the engineering department. Another one is Eighth Street East from Trunk Highway 27 all the way down to Fifth Avenue Southeast. Edgewood Drive was about a two-and-a-half block stretch that we received a petition for, and Front Street. All of these projects, because of the number of signatures on it, all require a seven-eighths vote to move forward. So tonight we'll be asking the council to table the resolutions so that we have an action on February 5th when hopefully we have a full council at that point. But we will do the public hearings this evening so that you have input from the public and from the residents. So, Fifth Street Northwest, we do have the affidavit of publication as well as the mailing and notices to the paper and the residents. The stretches that we're looking at are two stretches. The first one here is between Third and Fourth Avenue Northwest. We received a petition for this stretch to do blacktop, curb, and gutter. When we did the televising of that stretch, we actually had some sanitary sewer in this area that was pretty severe, and you'll see coming up here. The next stretch is a petition, or non-petition, a staff-initiated to extend the blacktop up in the, between Fourth and Fifth Avenue. We currently have blacktop in this stretch, blacktop here. In '17, we put blacktop over here, and then we received the petition. So, this stretch was basically a reaction to what we received down here for the petition. So, we looked at, this is an existing gravel road. The water main was put in in 1977. It was six-inch ductile iron pipe. The sanitary sewer was put in in 1964, eight-inch clay pipe, and the sanitary, or the storm sewer was put in in 2017. We will need some catch basins on that first block of Fifth Street Northwest, but the main line is installed there. The next stretch, like I mentioned, is a staff-initiated. Again, there's a gravel road there. Both the sewer and water in good shape, relatively new, 91 for the water main and 2004 for the sanitary. The storm sewer, we don't have storm sewer in there except at the intersections of the street. So, looking at the televising here, when we looked at the televising, this is the clay pipe between Third and Fourth Avenue. You can see there's a cutout right here in the sanitary. There's a crack in the pipe. Somebody cut the top off the pipe and then put it back in. All of these are areas of INI, groundwater getting into the sanitary sewer that we then need to treat. This section of pipe is the worst part of it, worst I've seen, and you'll see a closer view. All of this is cracks that are going every which way, spiderwebbed in through there. They're offset, so they're barely, barely holding up the soil behind it. This is one of the joints where the two pipes come together. You can see quite a bit of water coming in through there, an indication of what we see on the west side with the clay pipe. It doesn't have that gasket to keep the water out. Again, water that gets down to the treatment plant that we need to, need to treat. Here's a snapshot of that, that clay pipe there where it's actually coming in. You can see, again, there's quite a bit of water coming in through that stretch. You notice on the bottom, most of this water is clear, simply because it's groundwater that's coming in into our system that we were trying to avoid. We've seen all of the, the old pipe and what it's not supposed to look like. This is newer pipe. This is between Fourth and Fifth Avenue on Fifth Street. This is what pipe is supposed to look like. You can see the flow on the bottom. The channel is narrow and relatively consistent. The joints on the pipe are together tight, and they don't, they're not offset. When the camera goes over them, you don't see a bounce or a bump in there. So, this is what we, what we expect to see and what we like to see in the, in the sanitary videos. This is a manhole on the north end of Fifth Street Northwest. We will be getting that taken care of outside the project itself, but it's an indication of how much groundwater is actually in that, in that area. This is groundwater that's forcing its way through, through the manhole and into, or through the pipe and into the manhole here. It's basically squirting it four feet across the manhole, so there's quite a bit of pressure that's, that's in there. So, the improvements that we're looking at, between Third and Fourth Avenue, we're looking at replacing that sanitary sewer with PVC pipe, the green pipe that you saw on the screen. We will be stubbing out the services to the property line where needed. There's two vacant lots that currently do not have services, that we will be stubbing those out. The water main, we'll leave that as it existing, and the water services, again, those two vacant lots, we'll be stubbing those out where there are none. The storm sewer improvements will include catch basins at the intersections, and we'll be putting back a 32-foot urban section with our typical five-foot of aggregate base and three-and-a-half inches of bituminous pavement. Looking at the opinion of probable costs, construction for the first stretch is at $107,463. When you add the contingency and engineering, we're at $127,666. Between Fourth and Fifth Avenue Northwest, construction is looking at $78,220. With all the contingency and engineering, we're looking at $92,925. For the funding, the assessments are, on the first stretch between Third and Fourth Avenue, we're looking at 32.6%, which is $41,568, and the city picking up the remainder of that. On the second stretch between Fourth and Fifth Avenue Northwest, the assessments are at $35,795, or 38.5% roughly, and the city picking up the remainder of that. The assessment rates, these will change undoubtedly. Most of these rates were taken from our 2017 projects. We update those based on the actual bid prices and the actual construction cost. So, this is our, our best guess on what they're going to be, but undoubtedly they, they will change once we get to actual construction costs. For city project number 378, we do intend to sell general obligation bonds. Property owners with a permanent and total disability and meet income guidelines or 65 years of age and older may apply for deferment. Members of the Minnesota National Guard or other military reserves who is ordered into active military service, as defined by section 190.05, subdivision 5B or 5C, may also qualify for deferment. Looking at the payment of it, we are looking at an interest rate of 5% over 15 years. The assessments would potentially be payable in annual installments, and there's no interest if paid within the first 30 days of adoption. So, looking at the next steps, we are at the public hearing on the 16th here. We're looking at design in January and early February. We hope to advertise for bids after the council gives approval in February with opening bids on March 7th. Construction would be the spring and summer of 2018, with construction being completed this, this fall. Any questions on the first stretch there?
No questions. We'll open it up for public comment. If anybody wished to speak, raise your hand or stand. I'll call upon you. Go to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak on these projects? Final call. Anyone wish to speak? Hearing none. 7:41, we'll close the public hearing. And you want to motion to table these as we go, or just?
We can do it all at the end.
Okay. So, that was on four and five you just did, right?
Number five, we did receive one letter in opposition.
Okay.
We do have that on file here, but the first one, in number four, we did not receive any for or against, but in number five, we did receive one in opposition.
Is that in the shared file?
It's not. We just received it now, actually.
Yeah.
So, 7:42, open public hearing on Eighth Street Southeast?
Eighth Street Southeast. This is a staff-initiated project. We do have the affidavit of publication as well as the mailing notices to the residents. Looking at the project stretch, as I mentioned, we're going from Trunk Highway 27 all the way down to Fifth Avenue Southeast. Last year, we completed Seventh Street, which was from Broadway down to Fifth Avenue, so we're extending it one block and basically going over one block. The project need for, for this one that we are proposing, we did have, we do have multiple sewer backups, which you'll see coming in the, in the videos. We also have seen frozen water service lines in that stretch. We're looking at correcting that issue. It does have a PESA rating of three, which means the, the pavement itself is in poor condition. The water main was installed between 1938 and 1949. It's six-inch cast iron pipe, and the sanitary sewer is eight-inch clay pipe, which was installed in 1949. The storm sewer was installed between 1970 and 1974 at the intersections, and you will notice in the assessments that it's prorated based on life of those, of the storm sewer. So, there are some of them that are not quite the, the full amount because of the prorating for that. So, here's a picture of Eighth Street Southeast. The pavement is, you know, there's block cracking quite, quite a bit in that area. The curb and gutter, there's some that's broken up, some that are, that's in decent shape, some that's non-existing, but this is indicative. You've got potholes at the, at the intersection there. Looking at the televising here, this is a root ball at one of the service lines. This is where a lot of the, the blockages start to collect. Here's another video or a shot of that screenshot there. Here's some video. You can see at the, the joints with clay pipe, the joints every six feet, so there's a lot more chance for the, the roots to intrude into the sewer, whereas with PVC pipe, it's every 20 feet. Another thing to point out, this is a service line up at the top. You'll notice that it's sticking down about inch and a half, two inches there. That's another place where something can get caught up, whether it's our jetter when we're trying to clean the, the roots out, or the camera itself, or something else, you know, toilet paper, even though it's on the top, could potentially get caught up in that area. Looking at some more televising here, you'll notice in this first picture here, the water line is up quite a bit compared to what we saw in the previous one. This is an indication of where a sag is starting to, to occur, so the pipe is starting to dip down. We'll see that in a, in a video here. This is where a lot of your toilet paper and such is going to start to collect and accumulate, and then a plug is going to, or blockage in the line is going to, to eventually occur. Another snapshot of what we found in the video, this is the top of the pipe. You can actually see the roots right there. There's a chunk that fell out for whatever reason, just because of the age, and so there's really nothing holding that dirt above, other than that, those roots in that, that area. Here's the video of that section we were looking at. Later on in the video, as it gets farther down, you'll see the, the camera going over those, those joints, it starts to bump. You can see there's, there's offset joints there. That's an indication that the pipe isn't completely tight to one another, so you have the potential for INI in there, which is inflow, groundwater coming in. You see the camera went underneath the water, so it got deeper and deeper, and eventually it does come back out, but that's, that's an area where we're going to start seeing stuff occur and stuff build up and potentially block, block the sewer. Another snapshot, this is hard to see, but this is roots all the way plugging the sanitary sewer in that, in that area. So, what are we proposing to do? We're looking at putting in a 10-inch sanitary sewer. The residents would be assessed at an eight-inch. We're looking at a 10-inch because it serves more than just the Eighth Street portion of it, so put in a 10-inch, oversize it so that the residents upstream of that will be able to use that, that pipe as well, but the residents only pay at an eight-inch cost. Sanitary service lines will be stubbed out to the property and replaced. We'll install a new six-inch water main, new water services to the property line. Storm sewer improvements in that area as well, and then finally, we will replace it with a 32-foot urban section, which is five inches of aggregate base and a third, three-and-a-half inches of bituminous pavement. Looking at the opinion of probable costs, we're looking at just under $800,000 for construction. With contingency and engineering, we're looking at a project cost of $946,170. Looking at the assessments and how the, the split would be, right now, we're looking at about 54.3% assessed, with the city picking up the remainder, and again, those prices, or those splits would likely change once we see the bid prices. Looking at the assessment rates for the project, again, these were pulled from our 2017 project, so these will undoubtedly change once we, once we get bids and once we get construction underway. You will notice there's an asterisk down here on the bottom. The design life for the storm sewer is 50 years. You recall, some of that storm sewer was installed in between 1970 and 1974, so it's prorated between 88 and 96% to account for that design life. Again, for the deferments, the city intends to sell general obligation bonds. Property owners with a permanent and total disability or who meet income guidelines and are 65 years of age or older may apply for deferment. Members of Minnesota National Guard or other military reserve who is ordered into active duty per the Minnesota State statutes may also apply for deferment for the project. Same interest rates and term. We're looking at 15 years for the project, five and a half, or 5%. No interest charged if, if it's paid in full within 30 days. Same timetable as previous. We're looking at opening bids March 7th with construction this year, and that's it for this Eighth Street portion.
Questions for Greg?
I do, Mr. President. Greg, what's the plans for sidewalks on Eighth Street?
We do not have, Eighth Street is not have sidewalk proposed on it at this time.
Okay. Doesn't that kind of go against the Safe Route to Schools initiative?
What we look at is basically locations that are traffic generators for pedestrians, so the school, and then anything else that's in there. So, Broadway, it does have a, it does have a sidewalk, and we propose to keep that on Broadway, but going out from there, we don't have any plans to install sidewalk on that stretch.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We'll open up for public comment.
Mr. President, one other thing. We did receive two letters in opposition for the Eighth Street project. You have one in your packet, and then we received one this evening as well.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Third and final call. Anyone wish to speak? Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing at 8:49, or 7:49. We'll move on to Edgewood Road.
Edgewood Road. We do have the, oops.
7:50, open the public hearing.
We do have the affidavit of publication as well as the mailing of public hearing to the residents. Looking at the project location, Belle Prairie Junction is up here on the, the north right side of the, or the top right side of the screen. Cabin fever is up beside. Edgewood Road here is the stretch. We did receive a request from a resident to extend city water and services to the property at the corner. They're looking at building a house, and so we reviewed both the north-south leg of Edgewood Road as well as the east-west stretch of it. Looking at the costs, it was more cost-effective to go the east-west stretch, so that's what we're discussing this evening. We will notice in the pictures coming up that the bituminous pavement is in decent shape. It's a PESA rating of seven, which is considered good. There's no water, no sewer, and no storm sewer on that stretch. You'll see here, there's some transverse cracks, but they're typical of that age of the, of the blacktop. The proposed improvements, we're looking at an eight-inch sanitary sewer to serve the area, service line stubbed out to the property, eight-inch water main, eight-inch services again to stubbed out. We are looking at a 26-foot rural section, so no curb and gutter in that stretch, similar to what there's, is there currently. No stormwater improvements, so if the water is ponding somewhere, it will continue to pond in that area as well. Five inches of aggregate base, and then three-and-a-half inches of pavement on top of that. Looking at the probable costs, construction comes in at about $205,056. With engineering and contingency, it's $243,606. Project funding for this stretch, 56 points, 56% would be assessed, so that's $136,463. City picking up the remainder to bring a total cost of $243,606. Looking at the rates, we're looking at $10.86 for a 26-foot wide rural section. That's for the front footage. If you recall, in a rural section, the front footage is 100%. The side footage is, is 50% up to 150 feet of property. So, the, the side footage at $5.43. The sewer and water, these rates were pulled from our 2017 projects, so those, well, all of these will likely change once we get bid prices on it, but these were our best guesses in terms of bid prices that we had last year, so that's what we use for the estimates. Again, the city intends to sell bonds for the project. It may be combined with other ones if the council moves forward with multiple segments of it. We do have the deferment policy. 65 years of age or older and meet income guidelines, permanent and total disability, and then members of the National Guard who may meet the Minnesota State statute. In the past, I know the council has had deferments on sections, specifically in the annexation area, the Riverwood area, where the, we recognize that the property owners have put forth the, the expense for the septic and well, and so we've deferred those until the hookup. It's an option the council has available to them if they so choose, but I wanted to bring that up tonight because I'm sure that's going to be one of the things that you'll hear about tonight. The interest rates and the assessments are 5% over 15 years, equal installments, and no interest charged if paid within the first 30 days of the assessment rule adoption. Same timetable as the previous ones. We'd be looking at a bid opening of March 7th with construction this summer, and that's that one.
Questions for Greg? Hearing none. We'll open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Go ahead to the podium, please. Name and address.
My name is Bruce Van Ness. I live at 15134 Edgewood. A series of questions. First, a statement. I'm on fixed income. I'm a retired gentleman. I've owned that property for about 20 years. I've been living there for about two and a half years. I cannot afford the taxes that you people assess on us. First question, is this project a fait accompli? Can it be stopped?
Yeah.
Is this, can it be? What would it take to do that?
The council have voted down.
True.
So.
I, for one, I think my neighbors support me. I'm opposed to this project. It's a project that we do not need, didn't ask for. Secondly, Greg mentioned something about front and side. I noticed there's two line items for the bituminous road.
Yes.
Would you explain that further, please?
So, on a typical.
Greg, hang on. He's got two minutes. Let's get, then we can answer his questions.
All right. I need to understand why there's two line items for the bituminous road. And, thirdly, as I watched the presentation, I saw several different variations of the split between the city and the property owners. I would like to understand how that number has arrived at. It ranged, to my recollection, somewhere between 47 and 56%. Why is it different? That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Governor.
Go ahead and answer him.
So, on the assessments for the bituminous, the front is assessed at, your front footage, so if it's a typical 80 by 150 lot, and I know most of the lots out there are larger than that, but the front footage is assessed at a 100% rate or a larger rate. The side footage is 50% of the front footage. So, if you've got a corner lot that's 80 by 150, you'd be assessed the, the rate, in this case, it was $10.86 for, over that 80-foot wide lot. The side footage, which is 150 feet, would be assessed at the $5.43 per, per linear foot, because the city recognizes that it's quite expensive on rural and residential neighbors to have 100% on both sides of that corner lot. So, in your case, you do have a unique lot because it's the, the corner there. You do have the front and the side footage on, on your particular property. Most of the properties only have one or the other, but in your case, you've got the corner lot, so you do see the, both the front and the side footage on that. In terms of the, the percentages for how much is the split for the city and how much is the split for the residents, the street, we assess out at 25%, and the utilities are at 35%. And, again, depending upon what the split is for those assessable footages, which ones are, how much we have in terms of corner lots, basically varies that, that split where it's at, but we try to get to 25% assessed on the left side of the road, 25% on the right side of the road, and 50% in the, in the, for the city's component of it. And, again, depending upon how we assess those out, or how we're able to calculate those out with the sewer water and the services, it's going to vary that, that amount, but we try to go to that 25, 25, 50 component is where we try to shoot for.
Anyone else wish to speak?
May I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
Could we discuss that further in a minute?
Sure. You can come on in. Yep.
After the meeting, something like that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Go ahead.
Larry Holstein. I'm at 15119 Edgewood Road. Question I have, I have talked to Greg about it. So, if the city were to come down there, would we still have to pay for all this work, or is this only if we were to hook up to the water and sewer? So, you bring water and sewer down the street, you stub into each of the properties. Do we have to pay for it at that time, or is it only when we would hook up? Mine was assessed at almost $35,000. Now, I'm going to have to take out another mortgage on the house to pay for that. That's a lot of money. That's all I got.
Thanks, Larry. So, Greg, that's what you're talking about, is deferral until they hook up, correct, like we've done in the past?
Yep. So, like in the, much like we've done in the other areas of the Riverwood annexation, we've deferred those assessments until they hook up, so they basically sit idle until they hook up. Now, that's a decision the council ultimately has to make, but that's one that we've done in the past.
Could you repeat that, please?
So, in the Riverwood annexation area, basically, the, well, you guys know where it's at. In the past, we have deferred those assessments, so the, the number that we, they, we sent out to you guys and what the final number would be is yet to be determined, but those would be deferred until you hook up to city water and sewer. So, if you hook up to city sewer, then the assessments would, would become due. If you hook up to city water, the assessment would become due. The council ultimately has to make that determination to, to make that deferment, but it has, it has been done in the past in the Riverwood area for that reason, that we, we recognize that, you know, there's been an expense on your part to put the, the well and septic in before you were annexed into the city. They recognize that, and so they, they have taken steps in the past. They recognize that, and so they have taken steps in the past to address that. And the deferment is that process.
Thank you.
Yep.
But the road has usually been done at the time because the road is being used for the bituminous.
We've usually lumped them all together as one assessment, so we don't split those two out. It's usually all been one.
And what we did with the, in some of the other instances is if, for instance, they had, a property owner had to connect to city sewer but not city water, then the blacktop was assessed when they connected to the first utility.
Okay. So once they hooked up the sewer, then they got the road and sewer at the same time?
The road and the sewer, right.
Correct. But not the water until they tapped the water?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak? Go ahead.
My name is Stephen Herney, 15085 Edgewood Road. I just got some questions. This is my first experience with special assessments, so I'm just kind of trying to gather some information. I did expect at some point the city to do this. I was kind of surprised it was only coming one. I would have thought the whole development would have been done once... The township paved the road, and I don't think there's been any service of overlay or there, so it's awful pebbly to be a good road. So one of my questions is, if you're going to do it up to that lot and not the whole development, are you going to at least do an overlay on the rest of it so that we at least have a decent road all the way through? The other questions I have is, is the 800 and 1200 for stubbing out to the property line? Or what's the 800 and 1200?
Yes.
And since I have a bare lot, how, where do you determine where that stub should be for a house that's not built? Because I would think that could impact how a potential buyer puts their house on their property. Because I expected this to come through. I just thought it would be the entire development when it came through, not just one stretch, because it doesn't make sense to me why. Because if you look going north, there's more vacant lots going north for development, or there's more empty land going north than there is on ours. So if you're doing it for potential houses coming in, to me, you would do it on the coming from the north or you do the whole development. So, thank you.
Yeah. Want me to answer?
Go ahead, Greg.
Okay. So to address your first question, if we were planning to overlay the rest of Edgewood, the north-south stretch, the answer would be no, simply because it costs a fair amount of money to do the overlay. And knowing that at some point in time, we're planning on putting sewer and water in there for something to develop or build, we'd wait until they would need sewer and water in order to do that. Basically, just looking at the capital to go out to do that. So we wouldn't be looking at doing it at this point in time, but obviously, at some point in the future, we would be doing that stretch. For the stubs, the 800 and 1200 is to stub the services out to the property line. If you were to connect up to it, obviously, you'd have to go from the property line into your house and make that connection. The location of those stubs in the vacant lots, we would work with the current property owner to see where they would want those stubs at to best serve that particular lot. So if you want them in the middle or if you want them on one side versus the other, we'd work with you to see where you would like to have those are at.
And Greg, the reasoning not coming down from the north is just the expense with the lift station because they don't want to go all the way down?
Well...
To go from the north all the way in, there isn't enough slope, correct?
Correct. So looking at the stretch here, we looked at both this stretch and this stretch. Gravity sewer, we can get from here around the corner to about right here, and then we have to send gravity this direction to go to the north. So you're going to have a manhole right here that splits, sends it this direction and sends it this direction. So rather than having all of this done at one point in time and then potentially having deferred assessments and the capital out there for both stretches, to serve what was being desired right now, we'd look at just the, one of the two stretches, which was the east-west one, which was less expensive.
Which gets us access to where we need to be.
Correct. Correct.
Or where the request was.
Where the request was.
Do we have a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Is the east-west end, the line should be developed or designed enough to handle the north-south coming down with it for the future? Or will the north-south be going north?
North-south will be going north. We can't get enough grade in this pipe. We're limited where we connect in on Riverwood here, so we can't get enough depth in this pipe to go all the way around. This stretch is going to have to flow to the north, and this stretch has to flow to the west. No matter which direction we go, this is the breakpoint right here for the gravity to flow.
And the other, at least, can the city consider if they're going to put a new road across where we are, do something, get rid of the pebbles, go back going north?
In this stretch here?
Yeah. Just, I don't know, can you do a half inch? It's been, I think we've been there 26 years, and they probably put the road in five years after we've been there. They brought it in that first stretch, and then when they added it to the north, they put that in, but nobody's put a oil poacher in my lot either, 26 years. Can they, at least, the city consider that?
We can consider it. I know we'll, we can discuss it with the council. But, you know, just looking at it, even if we spend, and I'm just going to throw a number out there, $10,000 on something here, knowing, is it going to be two years? Is it going to be 10 years? Is it going to be 20 years? When somebody, and I'm not sure if this is the vacant lot or not, but if somebody decides to build a house there where we have to, you know, dig it back up and essentially throw that money away, that's where I'm leaning not to necessarily do anything, but we can definitely review it and talk to the council about it.
We could address it when we do our maintenance plan for this year or whatever. Any other discussion or any other questions? Final call, any one wish to speak? 807 will close the public hearing. And 808 will open the public hearing for Front and Wood Street.
The last one this evening we're going to talk about is Front Street. We did send out the publication for mailing as well as in the paper. Stretch that we're looking at is from Trunk Highway 27 around the corner by the dam over to Wood Street and then about a half a block stretch here of Wood Street. Existing has a bituminous rating of Pazer of seven, which is defined as good condition. The six-inch cast iron water main is unknown in terms of the age. I would have to guess it's one of the first ones just because of its close proximity to the river there. Sanitary sewer, again, unknown age with that, with the clay pipe. But a couple of the things that brought it up to our attention in terms of being a project that we're looking at this year, the existing horizontal and vertical curves don't meet the alignment needs for detour traffic. So in 2019, we know that MinDOT is looking at reconstruction of Trunk Highway 27. Our desire, at least as a staff level, is that we try to have a detour route as close to the downtown as possible. This is one of the areas, the area that we've identified as a potential detour route for traffic, at least local traffic, not truck traffic, to get through the downtown area to be able to serve those businesses if possible. Looking at the retaining wall of the dam, and you'll see that in a little bit here, it looks like it's concrete slabs that are just stacked on top of each other. Don't feel 100 percent sure on the safety of that, but that's another concern. And then the detour route I mentioned for that. So looking at here, this is the stretch that looks like the concrete slabs that are stacked on top of each other. This is obviously cast in place, but then you get this stretch over here, that's a little bit questionable. So the route that we'd be looking at doing is basically flattening out this curve right in through here to go kind of where the pine trees are at and then touch down again at its current location. We did bring in fill in this area from our 2017 project to bring the grade up a little bit so that we can flatten the steep slope right here so that vehicles can get around here much easier. Looking at the picture and image of that, you can see the transverse cracking. Again, that's what dictates the Pazer rating of seven or good condition. So looking at it from a street view, we'd be looking at bringing the road right in through here, keeping it away a little bit from this section and flattening that curve. So we'd construct new eight-inch sanitary sewer on Wood Street, abandon the sanitary sewer on front, which is right down here. This sewer would be abandoned. We'd put new sewer up on Wood Street. You'll see there is a fire hydrant here. We'd be abandoning this water line that comes in between the two parks. It really doesn't serve anything and really doesn't loop anything at this point, so we'd be abandoning that stretch. We'd have a new six-inch ductile iron pipe on Wood Street to serve any development that may potentially go there. Services stubbed out to the vacant property, and then we would have a 32-foot urban section with curb and gutter, five inches of aggregate base and three and a half inches of bituminous. This would potentially be the detour route for the 2019 Trunk Highway 27 project, and then the utility improvements would allow us to sell and redevelop that adjacent property that we currently own. Looking at the project costs, construction comes in at $243,838 with a total project with engineering contingency at $288,492. Assessments are just over 26 percent at $75,615. You'll notice this one is considerably lower than the rest, simply because when we look at an aerial photo here, this side of the project, basically, we don't have anybody over there to assess. So we've got the left side, which is the city, which we still assess ourselves, but we don't have anything on the river side to be able to assess to. Looking at the rates, again, these are from our 2017 project and will likely change, but those are the rates that we have in there for preliminary numbers to go from. We do intend to sell bonds if this project moves forward. Property owners with a permanent and total disability meet income guidelines, 65 years of age or older may apply for deferment. And then if you meet Minnesota State Statute 190.05 and member of the Minnesota National Guard, you may also qualify for deferment. Interest rates at 5 percent over 15 years, no interest charged if paid within the first 30 days. We are looking at construction this summer, 2018, bid opening of March 7th and completed in the fall. Any questions?
Is there a reason we're not putting sidewalks on either side of that?
On the east side?
East or the west?
We are putting it on the west, but not the east. So it'll be on the, down here, kind of by the river side there?
Yep.
We will have it here, but not up, not up in this stretch, simply because it's fairly close to the river there. We don't have railing or anything like that proposing it. We can always do that if you want us to add that to it, but it's not included in the project at this time.
So if that's going to be our through highway detour, we have sidewalk on both sides of 27. We got sidewalks up to the dam. We got sidewalks on top of the bridge. We're talking a half a block of sidewalk to put in there for safety?
We can.
There's a lot of, I think that's pretty highly used up and down there with people walking, and to have a connection through there, I think would be beneficial to have a sidewalk for them to stay off from the main 27 highways, what's going to be used going up and down. At there, I would think it'd be beneficial for a safety issue to have a sidewalk in there for doing that section.
I can see the benefits of it. Yeah, we can add that stretch if the council would feel that that's a benefit to it.
And what do you think as far as safety, chief? Would you?
I would recommend it with a railing. There's a lot of foot traffic through there. A lot of kids walk through there, and it'll create that barrier. If you put a fence up there, it'll create the barrier for the river as well.
Right. Much like over on the north side by the post office.
Exactly.
Yep.
I think there is a canoe landing there.
Yeah, there's the portage right here. So that stretch will need to be open, but we can have a railing up to on both sides.
You going to take out those pine trees?
Pine trees would have to go, yes.
So the new, the new road will be at a higher grade, right? So is there going to be some kind of retaining wall?
We will actually slope it. So right now, it's up about three and a half feet or so. We'll actually slope this down, a gentle slope down to kind of where the curb and gutter is at now. So it'll slope that direction, but it won't be an abrupt...
So the road itself will be sloped?
Nope, the bituminous. So the road's going to be over here.
Okay.
And it's up about as high as that hydrant is now, and then it'll slope down, the grass will slope down towards, towards the river.
Are you just going to leave that old bituminous there then? Are you going to put it all in grass?
It'll be all grass. So it'll be a, basically a connection between James Ferguson over here to the dam.
That'd be nice.
So there will be no parking down there no more?
Yep. The parking will get moved over into this stretch over there. So we're going to extend it farther this direction, closer to Wood Street, to better align with the, with the new alignment. It won't be as close right in through here. It'll actually get moved this direction to the east, but there will still be parking. There's quite a few people that actually park down there to visit the dam.
You can't save the trees?
Can't.
Are they already gone?
What's that?
Are they already gone?
Nope. Trees are still there.
Okay. Well, I know you had the gravel in there.
Open up for public comment. Anyone from the public list to speak? Anyone from the public list to speak? Third and final call, anyone from the public list to speak? Hearing none, 816. We'll close the public hearing. What is the wish of the council on Resolution 2018 through 04 through 2018-08?
I would make a motion to table those until our February 5th meeting.
Second.
Got them. All we need is a motion to table, correct?
Oh.
They've been tabled. Nothing under old business? New business, Resolution 2018-09, fee schedule, golf course? John?
Yes, as I discussed in the previous work session, we've had a lot of reviews about our golf course and the revenue and expenditures, trying to increase revenue, decrease expenditures so that we can attain profitability. This is our next step in the increases towards the revenues. We are basically leading the way of our neighboring courses this year by setting our rate structures, trying to be kind of in the neighborhood ballpark of our two closest competitors being Eagles Landing in Oak Hill to the north and the south. So with that, our greens fees, 18 holes with a cart, when you combine the two together, will be about, will be $39. And we do intend to offer a free bucket of small golf balls with that, and then our other rates are going to be going up. It isn't based on a fixed percentage between any of them. It's kind of setting it to a rounded number that's, that we feel is palatable and would keep us competitive with the other courses. Noting, this is probably not enough that we need in, to get to the real profitability level, but we have to make small incremental steps to get there, because if we raise it up too much, it would be, could be an easy motivation for somebody to not take a membership when there's an available course, you know, 10 miles and 20 miles away to play at. So we feel both the course manager, Rich, and I feel that these rates would get us into that, kind of that area in increasing the revenue for the course.
What's the wish of the council?
We just need a simple majority on this one, right?
Yep.
We don't need 7 eights?
Not 7 eights. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-09. Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Liljgren for approval of Resolution 2018-09. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution. Call a roll, please.
Burcock?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Knopfela?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries?
We didn't hear Jerry said yes.
Yes.
Request to release tourism funds. Little flaws convention in Visitors Bureau. Consider? John?
Yes, as you may know, typically, we've done this each year because in our past agreements with the Convention Visitors Bureau, we retained a lot of the funding. We had been retaining funding up to a certain point. Afterwards, it was, a lot of it was utilized to make special requests for projects by the Convention Visitors Bureau. the Convention and Visitors Bureau, so we would release those in the beginning of the year so that Chris would have opportunity to do additional things, because we had more revenue coming in than we did in the past. Now, we've moved to a different funding structure where ninety-five percent of all the restaurant and lodging funds will be distributed to the Convention and Visitors Bureau throughout the course of this year. However, that funding will take the time, it'll take time to collect that and distribute that over the course of the year. So, she has approached her board about these projects, the six projects that are included in the packet. I do want to comment that there is just an adding error. The twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollar number should be twenty-five thousand eight hundred, but the total at the bottom is correct. One project is a carryover from the previous year. She would be requesting reimbursement after these funds have been, the projects have been expended. So, it's within the money that we have, it's funds that we have to designate towards tourism, so I feel it's a valid, these are valid projects and support moving forward with that in the future. It's the intent that now that ninety-five percent of that revenue is going to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, these requests would need to be made, because the retained five percent will be, will be needed for us and our administration costs in doing the tax collection and audits related to that.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the Convention and Visitors Bureau's request.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by Councilmember Conoffla for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution 2018 dash ten, year-end transfers. What is the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Alderman Hurcock to approve Resolution 2018 dash ten. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Conoffla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Carries?
Anyone got any reports? Announcements? Eight twenty-two, we will adjourn.